Let me grab my script for the work session. I don't have a gavel, but just I'm gonna knock on wood and hopefully that's decent enough. This work session of the Board of Education for December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two is called The Order. Tonight's work session is focused on a review of our, oh, I do have a gavel, thank you Kara, on a review of our fall MAP achievement data. As a board and administration, I know that we want to keep our primary focus on student achievement, and this latest data provides us with valuable insight about how our students are performing. Superintendent Guerrero, could you please introduce this topic?
Well, it's really the Dr. Adams show tonight, but we do appreciate the board's continued focus on student achievement outcomes, so tonight represents another opportunity to hear from our latest MAP achievement results, and you're gonna hear about the trends we're observing there tonight. So, Bernard, over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Today's board members happy to be with you again tonight. Happy to be with you again tonight. As you may recall, in the fall, we look at our MAP achievement data, and in the winter, we look at our MAP growth data. So, we're here tonight to look at fall MAP achievement data. So, I'm excited to be with you to share that tonight. On the screen are the guiding questions that are driving tonight's presentation. How does student achievement compare this fall to last fall? There was also, there's been great interest in Summer Acceleration Academy, and so we had just some preliminary, preliminary snippet of data to talk about if there was any impact on MAP scores based on students attendance in our Summer Acceleration Academy. So, pleased to share that as well. And then, at the end of the PowerPoint for interested board members and public, there are demographics around which students participated, what their participation rates were, et cetera, because I know that has also been of interest.
Great. Dr. Adams, I'm just gonna interrupt you for one quick second. Just from a logistical perspective tonight, because we are streaming, when you're talking, please make sure your mic is on so that it gets picked up by the audio. And the other thing I will say is there is a little bit of dinner if you want to eat during the work session, and I would just ask that we not all go at once, but maybe one at a time can go grab. And it is not super easy to find, but if you go down this hallway, quite, quite a ways, there is a go-lady demos room, and inside of that room is dinner. And I would suggest that you eat, we are gonna be going straight from this work session into our six P M. board meeting. Apologies for the interruption.
No worries, no worries. So, let's jump right in. One of the ways we can understand how achievement is moved is by looking at median percentile ranks in our MAP data. And so, on the screen before you are the median percentile ranks of student groups from fall two thousand twenty-one and from this fall of two thousand twenty-two. The arrows and the lines indicate the direction and magnitude of any changes in percentile ranks since last school year. Here, we can note that a majority of the changes in math are increases in percentile rank, particularly in grades three through six. This is promising, as those grade levels are students who would have had exposure to our new mathematics curriculum last school year. As we look at the differences between student groups, we continue to observe differential achievement and our predictable gaps by race and ethnicity, with black students performing below the twenty-fifth percentile, Latinx students performing at or near the twenty-fifth percentile in math, and white students performing between the fiftieth and the seventy-fifth percentile in mathematics. In examining percentile rank changes in reading English Language Arts, shown on the screen at the moment, we note that there are fewer percentile rank increases as compared to math, as well as smaller increases between the fall of twenty-one and the fall of twenty-two for most student groups. Again, here, you will also note the differences in performance of our students by race and ethnicity, with black students performing near the twenty-fifth percentile, Latinx students performing between the twenty-fifth and the fiftieth percentiles, and here, white students are performing at or above the seventy-fifth percentile. So, we still see those differences. Next, we'll get into our traditional fall analyses where we look at average RIT score by subject, but in within each grade level and by race and ethnicity. We'll begin with reading English Language Arts. As a reminder, the MAP assessments produce a scale score called a RAOCH instructional unit or a RIT score. A RIT score is an inner, it is an equal interval score that communicates the level of instruction where students are ready to learn today. As an equal interval score, we love those because you can compare them across time, and you can perform computations on them. So, let's dive right in. On the slide, the average RIT for the fall of two thousand twenty-one and the fall of two thousand twenty-two are shown in shades of orange with white text. The target RIT score for each grade level is shown across, is shown in black with a horizontal line that goes across the graphics. As was the case last fall in reading, overall, across grades three through eight, reading performance is exceeding the target expectations despite the ongoing impacts of the pandemic. It is noteworthy to add that when we compare performance over time, reading performance increased slightly in grade five, is flat in grade six, and decreased in all other grades, although it's still above that grade level expected norm RIT that we see by the black horizontal line. When we disaggregate our reading data, we can see that our students of color are furthest from the grade level expectation as measured by the target MAP RIT score. What's more, most student groups experienced a decline in average RIT score between this fall and last fall. For example, black students' achievement dipped by two RIT points, while Latinx student achievement decreased by three RIT score points. In grade four, the all-student group, multiracial and not historically underserved student group, white and Asian student groups met or exceeded the expected achievement of a RIT score of one ninety-seven. That said, we see again here the students of color are furthest from the expectation, and that most student groups experienced a decrease in academic achievement this fall compared to last fall. In grade five, we see the same student groups meeting or exceeding the target RIT score of two oh four. At this grade level, while black student achievement was flat, there were increases in Latinx, Native American, and Pacific Islander achievement. Onto the middle grades. In grade six, we see performance decreases in almost all student groups with the exception of all students, Latinx students, and students with disabilities, where there were some slight increases. In grade seven, native students saw an increase of seven points in RIT score performance. Asian students' achievement was flat, and all remaining student groups saw decreases of between two and five points. And so, as you may be noticing, in reading, we're seeing some decreased performance between this year and last year. And also recall that last year, we did not have newly adopted instructional materials in English Language Arts and in the areas of reading. And lastly, when we think of grade eight, we can see that our native students met that expected RIT score achievement, while all other students of color missed this mark. So, I'm hopeful, and I'll, spoiler alert, given what we see in our math data and the fact that we have high-quality, grade-level, standards-aligned curriculum materials, I'm hopeful that next year, we will see some increases in our reading data as we've so far seen in our math data based on OSAS. So, let's take a look at mathematics now in grades three through eight.
Question.
Yes, sir.
So, you mentioned the adoption of the math piece, and we're starting to see some improvements. And you're saying you were hoping to look at that in the English as well. Have we implemented that yet?
English is, ELA is being adopted this year, so it's in place now.
So, should we possibly see some increases come by next fall from the testing that we've done at the, then at the end of this year?
Fingers crossed, that's what I'm hoping.
Okay, thank you.
I do think it's important to point out in the research, there tend to be curricular dips as educators are becoming familiar with the material and the new scope and sequence, but the expectation is that yes, with increased access to standards-based, high-quality materials, that in the long term, we'll see improvements.
And what we might see, based on achievement going down in reading, we might see it holding steady first before it starts increasing, which is still a win, because it's not decreasing over time. So, let's look overall in mathematics. In the aggregate, our map, our math MAP data shows some encouraging signs. First, you will note that students exceeded the RIT score expectations this fall of two thousand twenty-two in grades three through five and narrowed the gap in grade six. This is a promising sign of curricular implementation and use in mathematics. Those students, again, would have been in grades two through five last school year, and therefore would have experienced our then newly adopted, standards-aligned math materials. On the other hand, we see that grade seven was flat, and grade eight saw decreased performance. These students would have been in grades six and seven last year, where we did not have an adoption of curriculum materials until this fall. For additional context, last fall, in fall of two thousand twenty-one, students only met or exceeded the grade level RIT expectation in one grade, and that was grade three. And here, we see the meeting the expectation in grades three through five. So, again, that's really some promising and encouraging data.
Our eighth-grade class, of course, had, were challenged by another significant event in that most of their middle grades experience was virtual.
Let's start disaggregating. As was the case in reading, when we disaggregate our map, our math MAP data, that's a mouthful, we see that our students of color are still furthest from the grade level expectation. What we will note is that, and what is different than in reading, is that student groups are showing some early signs of improved academic performance. In grade three, the all-students, Asian, white, and multiple races that are not underserved all met or exceeded the grade level RIT score that's expected of one hundred eighty-eight. While our students of color are not yet meeting this expectation, there are performance increases that, albeit slight, are still encouraging as students are not losing ground. In grade four, our students of color, our Latinx students, showed the largest increase in academic achievement, achievement, increasing their average RIT score by three points, followed by our Asian students. Here, black students saw a slight decline in achievement, as did Pacific Islander students. Native students' achievement was flat from this fall to last fall. In grade five, we continue to see the impacts of high-quality curriculum materials. Here, with the exception of Asian students, all student groups showed increased academic performance as compared to last fall. Of students of color, Pacific Islander, and black students showed strong improvement with a four-point and a three-point gain in average RIT score, respectively. This fall's grade-six students were in grade five last year, and I'll remind you again, because I can't say it enough, because it excites me. They were also exposed to the newly adopted mathematics curriculum. As was usually the case in most of the elementary grades, students of color demonstrated increased achievement from the fall of twenty-one until the fall of twenty-two. When we get to grade seven, we're now showing the performance of last year's grade-six students. Remember, they did not have, we did not have an active middle school mathematics adoption last school year. Here, our students of color all experienced achievement declines, with the exception of our native students. In the aggregate, eighth-grade achievement declined by two RIT scale score points, and here, with the data disaggregated, you can see why. In grade eight, all, the all-student groups saw an achievement, excuse me, all-student groups saw achievement declines fall to fall. Pacific Islander students declined by five points. Native students declined by four points. Black students declined by three points, and Latinx students saw an achievement decline of two points. Again, this is a grade level where, until this year, there had not been adoption of standards-aligned material, and as the superintendent mentioned, these are what we might want to call children of the pandemic in that they had almost two full school years of education that was very different than the before times.
Dr. Adams, I think you said this at the beginning, and I want to make sure I understand the data. This is testing eighth-grade students from the fall of two thousand twenty-one and eighth-grade students in the fall of two thousand twenty-two. Okay, so it's not, it's not testing seventh-grade students and then testing them again in eighth grade to show their growth. It's testing different cohorts of eighth, of eighth-grade students, which is good, thank you. That's what I thought, I wanted to make sure I get it. Do we do any statistical significance analysis on this? Because I'm just, you know, as, as you're talking, some of these changes seem pretty large, you know, two, three, four points, others seem pretty small, just, you know, one point. But then, the, the relative size of the groups is also very different. And since we're testing different cohorts every year, is there any way to sort of determine whether a change is statistically significant or whether it may just be randomness? I mean, in my class, my teachers always told us we were the worst class they had seen in years, so I imagine, you know.
I think my teachers told us the same thing, Chair Scott. So, a really great question. So, the question, what I really think about when you ask that question is, when do we need statistical significance testing? And we need that when we only have a sample of a group, because we're trying to see if that sample can then be inferred back to the entire group, and if the differences between the sample and the group are really meaningful, or are they by chance? Because here, we basically have the entire group, we don't need statistical significance testing. The differences are the true differences.
That's a great point, thank you.
No, happy, that's a great question. I get to nerd out a little bit. Finally, as we draw the data dive to a close, there's, was quite a bit of interest from the board in knowing more about our Summer Acceleration Academy and any potential impacts on student achievement. A full report is still being finalized and being worked on, but I was shown some preliminary data and got a little bit exciting, so I wanted to share that with you, because the results are promising. In thinking about how to examine student achievement in MAP, we realize that we need to start with students' winter scores, as the spring testing is optional, and most students do not test in the spring, because we're testing for OSAS, for the State Summit of Assessment. Winter MAP data were among the data points used to centrally recommend students for the Summer Acceleration Academy. So, it was one of the data points, we said, hey, it looks like Bernard may benefit from Summer Acceleration Academy. Next, students with scores in both the winter and the fall became the focus of the analyses that I was able to see. MAP places students along an achievement continuum from low to low average to average high and high average, the five categories that are shown on the screen. And for purposes here, the analysis focused on student achievement as measured by movement between those categories. So, did I move from low, low average to low? Did I move from average to high, et cetera, et cetera? So, let's look at what these analyses are telling us so far. Of all the students with two reading scores, and that's the orange gradient bar chart on the left, nearly thirty percent, that's the top two colors, showed an increase in performance level of one or more levels. Fifty-three percent showed no change, and seventeen percent showed a decrease. Of the students who saw, who saw reading improvement, over seventy-seven percent were at the low or low-average performance level when they tested in the winter. Students who were below average appear to have made the greatest gains in reading between the winter and the fall testing. Similar results were noted when we focused just on our underserved students, which is the orange gradient on the right. Among those students, twenty-seven percent saw an increase in their reading level. Nearly fifty-eight percent saw no change, and fifteen percent saw a decrease in reading level.
Just a question about that. So, is no change, like, that's what we, that's what we expect? Or is like, are we expecting every student to move one level?
So, what you usually, make sure I'm talking to the mic. What you usually see, Director Brim Edwards, is what we call summer slide, where you test students sometime between the winter and the spring, and if you assess them again in the fall, it looks as if they lost a little ground by not attending any school. So, I actually take no change as no slide. So, that is also some positive news, although we want students to demonstrate increased performance.
Sorry, if you were, if you were moving along the continuum from, say, fourth grade to fifth grade, you'd be moving a level.
That's, yes. You're testing at another level.
So, that's what I'm trying to see the good news here. So, the top chart, I could see, like, that's an acceleration, the two or more levels acceleration. One level, it seems like, okay, they, they moved a level, which is what we'd expect.
We would expect that if not for summer slide, which is a phenomenon that happens to students, right?
I'm confused, because my understanding is the level is the average low, the low, average low, average, average high, high. And so, we're not talking about students increasing a grade level. We're talking about their proficiency on the test, right?
Okay.
Right.
I may be misunderstanding.
Well, something increasing, I guess, is.
So, but normally, a normal student who, like, finishes third grade, when they take their spring, their winter MAP test, they, let's say they get a one eighty, we would expect in the fall to see a slight decrease, because they haven't had school all summer, correct?
That's called summer slide, yes ma'am.
That's called summer slide. So, what we're, what you're telling me is that fifty-three percent of the kids did not experience protect, projected slide down a level.
Of those who attended Summer Acceleration Academy and for who we had both of their winter and their fall score.
So, it's not about the grade level, it's about the level of classification of their proficiency in the test. Am I understanding correctly?
That is correct.
So, that's sort of the question I was asking.
I'm just really confused, because level, I feel like we're using level in two different ways.
So, level, say it's like they're proficient is the, or pick one of the levels.
The, their, low average.
Say they're low average.
Or average.
If they, if they didn't move, we're saying that they're staying the same, so they're still low average, and we're saying they would be in that, the fifty percent bar.
Yes.
And, and that's what we're aspiring to, is to have them.
No, not, not what we're aspiring to, but.
Wouldn't we want them in the one?
We want them in the one or the two or more. However, based on the phenomenon of summer slide, it's sort of like not showing a regression from of your skills, right? Often, we see students show up in the fall, and it appears that they've lost some skill that we thought they had in the spring. And so, the absence of that is also, I would say, positive news, because it meant that students who would normally possibly have fallen back a level in reverse did not. It's not the ultimate great news we want. We want students to move up in their achievement level, but in the absence of summer slide, we take that as a positive impact.
And I think you verbally said that what we saw was the students who made gains, who went up a level or two levels, were most likely students that were low or low average. I think it'd be really helpful if you could send us that breakdown to just show us, and I don't know how much that would take, but to help us see, like, the kids who are already at average maybe stayed the same, but those low average jumped. I mean, I think that, that helps our narrative of understanding more of that impact of the Summer Academy.
Sure, and as I mentioned, the full report is coming.
Yes, thank you.
And, and we've seen data sliced that way before, like, how, when we, like, how many students are moving out of the lowest tier? Like, when we look at, I mean, that was a big part of our CSI designations, right? Like, how many students are in that lowest tier? So, if we can see this information sliced that way, that's really helpful, because that's really important, not just moving everyone.
So, are you, I want to just clarify, are we asking to see the data by those ranking, by the average, low average? Are we able to identify specific categories? I mean, I understand the math piece right here, that it, that the fifty percent, fifty-three percent is considered a positive, because they did not slide, as would have, would be expected at the, every fall.
I'm experiencing what I'm being asked as a double click into, into those areas of one or more or two or more, and possibly all of them. But I certainly can work on that with my team.
And then, just, and the question, so, these are all students, all students, and then underserved students, but they all participated in summer programming?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we also collect the data about the students who, the other categories? So, that we have for those who didn't participate in?
Oh, so, we, we have data on students who did not participate, and certainly could look at those analyses as well.
It would just be a good sort of baseline to be able to compare the, the really significant investment we made last summer.
Sure, this type of analyses treats every student as his, her, or their own baseline, and did I move and increase and get better in my academic skills? So, comparing to, comparing students who attended Summer Acceleration Academy to a group of students who didn't is a different analysis that can tell us some slightly different information. Thank you for the question. Let's look at the math data. In mathematics, where performance was generally lower at the onset, we saw similar patterns of improvement. Here, twenty-four percent of students showed an increase in math level. Sixty-two percent showed no change, and fourteen percent showed a decrease. As was the case in reading, the students furthest from the grade level expectations made the greatest improvement. Here, nearly seventy-nine percent of students who saw an increase in math level were characterized as low or low average in math in the winter of two thousand twenty-two. For underserved students, twenty-two percent showed an increase in mathematics level from winter to fall. Sixty-six saw no change, and eleven percent saw a decrease. So, these are promising and encouraging results. Summer Acceleration Academy appears to have affected students with the most need, allowing them to make the greatest gains. And these findings suggest that we could even PPS become more targeted in who we attempt to serve in Summer Acceleration Academy, to make sure we're serving the students who need the support most critically. So, as we bring our fall data dive to a close, I wanted to offer these conclusions about our MAP data. You saw that reading performance was flat, or it declined this fall compared to last fall. In grade levels where students experienced new curriculum materials last school year, math RIT scores increased going into this fall. And then, finally, Summer Acceleration Academy had a positive impact on students who needed the most instructional intervention, which I believe is good news. And with that, I'm open to questions and conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. We'll go ahead and just open it up to board questions and comments.
I have a question about, I know, I understand we're looking at fourth graders this year compared to fourth graders last year. As we're looking at the data, what, what, what do you know about third graders last year who are now fourth graders? Is there any way to tell if those students are continuing to grow? Do we think that they are where they should be based on their scores last winter?
So, those are cohort analyses, and while we didn't perform those, we did look to see, did this year's fourth graders compare? Did they perform exactly like last year's fourth graders or better? And where they performed better, based on what we observed, happened to be in grade levels where last year, they had that new math curriculum. And again, we saw a similar result in our overall math data at the elementary, math data at the elementary level with our OSAS scores, where we were the only district in the state that saw increases.
Wow, so saying math, math data, ten times fast, right?
It's, it's a mouthful.
So, do we, do we do any places where we look at that cohort analysis to see how students are performing over time?
We can, we certainly can.
I just was curious if that's something we do. I know we look at, you know, our students making a year's worth of growth in a year as part of what MAP data is helpful with, but I just wasn't sure if we look at that other piece.
We typically haven't looked at, let's say, fall-to-fall growth, because that's across two school years with a summer break in between. But we do, and that's why we tend to look at the within-year school growth instead.
And I, I think part of it is I'm just sort of nerdily interested in how the pandemic has affected different, you know, like, because of where students are and what they learn at different developmental stages, to see how the pandemic has affected different cohorts of students and how they compare to others. It's just, I don't know that it helps us as a school district, but it's just fascinating to look at how that impact has touched our student achievement. how that impact has touched our student achievement and where do we need to put the most resources to help shore that up?
Thank you for the comments and the question. Director Constan?
I think this question is probably for Dr. Proctor, but I'm just curious to understand, or maybe you, Dr. Adams, understand more about how our teachers and our building leaders are using this data and what that process is like.
Dr. Proctor was going to sit next to me to keep me company and then she decided not to. So I'm smiling because, yes, you did.
So how does this influence practice?
So with that, we are, we have professional development that we are offering teachers to not only look at the instructional framework and also implementation of the adopted curriculum, but to look at data and pieces of information through PTLCs, et cetera, to inform their instructional practice. So it is a part of the development, it is a part of conversations with teachers. And we're asking, you know, we support building leaders in those conversations as well.
Is that like at a, you know, writ large or in an individual basis? I mean, just to understand a little bit more, like, when a teacher, individual teacher gets the data for the students in their classroom, is it a digest and move on? Or is it a sort of continued engagement with what looks like the academic trajectory of each individual student?
So with our efforts to improve instructional practices overall, the first thing is to realize that teachers, different teachers are at different levels in their ability to incorporate data to inform their practice. And that is why we have professional development to support teachers in this work and also the work that we do with our building leaders to support and enforce the practice overall. You're asking a question and you want me, I don't know that I can say definitively, but it, but because of where, you know, it's an individual support to support teachers in getting there, if that, if that's helpful and if that makes sense.
And the data reinforced where students are performing right now. So it's another point, it's another piece of information that teachers can use in terms of their planning and understanding of how they need to provide scaffolds for their students for daily instruction.
And then there are other data points or points of information that teachers use to inform their practice. So MAP is one, one area. But as we know, in classrooms, there are multiple assessments that teachers incorporate through the instruction that's also embedded in the curriculum. And there's the examination of student work as a practice where teachers can look at student work and look at what students are producing to identify misconceptions as students are learning. So there are multiple ways in which teachers, we encourage our teachers to use data to inform their practices.
Additional questions? Seeing none. Superintendent?
There's no more inquiry from the directors. I just want to paraphrase a couple of the conclusions that Dr. Adams pointed out, mainly because I want to make sure our broader community can have some confidence in things like, and this is pre-pandemic, bond-funded investments in instructional materials. You're seeing how our initial implementation is beginning to show signs in the right direction. And then secondly, we made a very strategic move to offer academic acceleration opportunities this summer for students who we knew, you know, would be largely impacted or could be supported if we did so, and we're seeing.
The new implementation this year, as teachers become more and more familiar with the standards-aligned curriculum, more and more familiar with the instructional framework that's designed to help them improve their practice, we ultimately, over time, will see the outcomes in the data as well.
I think, I think another important point is, curricular adoption isn't over after one year, right? I've been in some schools and I met with a faculty recently this fall and I asked them, so how's it going at the end of the data presentation? Because I wanted to understand what was the feedback on the curricular materials. And this particular elementary faculty talked so highly of the mathematics curriculum now being in year two and having had some more intentional concentrated professional learning. They were like, oh, we, we get it now, we understand it, we can see the difference that it's making for students, right? And so I, I say that because a lot of times, things like curricular adoptions or other transformational initiatives roll out in places. And after one year, some people are like, well, we did that. And, and I fully expect next year for us to still be talking about curricular adoptions because it takes time for teachers and staff to really, and students to really respond to the high-quality materials and really get adept at using them to the best of their ability.
So at this time next year, we'll be, we have a line graph that shows, you know, a positive trajectory in terms of closing those gaps for, like, between the third and fourth and the fourth and fifth in reading and math.
That's what we're hoping for.
So we'll have dots, you know, on a graph that we'll be able to connect.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping for, for sure.
Great, thank you. Oh, sorry?
I'm going to ask, so if we, if you went to pre-pandemic, and I know it's not comparing the same cohort, but if you went to pre-pandemic and you looked at those places where we made gains, are we, are we getting back to where we were? Or are we surpassing that?
I don't have those analyses right at my fingertips, Director Brimmer, by the way.
So one, one thing that would be helpful as somebody who's a visual learner is to, if the narrative that you shared, you shared a lot of great, really useful information that was more granular than, interpretation of the slides, to be able to have that so the community can look at it and board members and just to better understand it. Because if you're not an expert at reading the slide, you might not pick up what, what you see as an expert of what are the sort of the key insights.
Thank you for that.
Great, thank you for the presentation. We're going to stand in recess for the next 15 minutes until six o'clock.